7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all village board members present except for trustee Warren and trustee Kaminsky, both who are excused. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is President's Report. Nothing too much to report tonight, but I will turn the microphone over to our village clerk who has an announcement.
I just wanted to remind everyone to vote tomorrow. There is a statewide primary for Supreme Court Justice. Polls open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. If you need help finding your polling location, you may call the clerk's office or look at MyVote, and that would also tell you what your polling location is. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go on to the next item, which is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee and department reports. We'll start with committee reports with committee chairs with trustee Zabel.
General government met earlier tonight, and we'll meet again on March 16th at 6:00 PM in this room.
Okay. The next Public Works meeting is?
March 3rd.
Okay. Do you know what time?
6 o'clock in this boardroom.
All right. And then trustee Hughes.
Public Safety is March 2nd, 6 o'clock in this boardroom.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else has anything else of announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports? Trustees Abel.
I just want to point out that it's MyVote.gov, I believe, is the website. So if you're looking for MyVote, it's MyVote.gov.
Thank you. Anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports? All right, then we'll go on to citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, so if there is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward for citizen input or public appearance, you're welcome to do so at this time. All I would ask is you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to come forward for citizen input or public appearance? All right, then we'll go on to the next item, which is Consent Agenda. Board?
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through J as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items A through J. Any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Hughes.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye. And that then takes us to Old Business. One Old Business item listed on tonight's agenda, Old Business Item A, 2020 Capital Projects Equipment Requests and Borrowing. This was on our last village board meeting agenda, and there was some questions in regards to some of the items that were listed for capital borrowing. And I guess we'll start with the village administrator, and he can give us any information that he has, or unless somebody has a specific question they'd like to bring forward first. Nope, then I'll go with village administrator.
Okay. Thank you. There are, there's one change to the list here from the previous meeting based on some updated information. I know there were some questions, first of all, related to the ambulance purchase, and that number is adjusted down from $300,000. We do have actual bids, and there's also an item under New Business to approve the purchase of that. The bid price came in at $283,881, and the fire chief is here if there are any specific questions about the features of the ambulance or how that compares to other communities. I did ask him to come and be able to respond to any of those if those questions are still out there.
Okay. Trustee Baum.
Yeah, chief, can you come forward and explain what we're actually getting this time and how it differs from the last ambulances we've bought?
So the last ambulances that were purchased were re-chassis ambulances. They took our old boxes and mounted them on new chassis. Those boxes have begun to fail. The new ambulance, we actually went with a decrease from what we've purchased in the past as far as chassis have gone. The last fully new ambulance we purchased was in 2010 and 11. That was an International chassis with a Lifeline box on it. We are continuing with the Lifeline box. Instead of an International chassis, we are going with a Chevy chassis on it, the difference of which is about $45,000. The only, I don't want to say extra, but the only thing that's kind of unique about the current ambulance that we're looking at is it has a power load feature, which means it automatically loads the cot by itself to try and prevent some of the back injuries that we get, especially when we have large patients, four or 500 pounds. So this one, we'll just wheel it up, and it'll actually lift the patient into the back for us. The difference between the Lifeline box and the wheeled coach boxes that we currently have now is the warranty. The Lifeline box has a lifetime warranty on it, and that includes if you do decide in the future to remount that box, that warranty carries over to the new chassis that it's on. So there is a potential for some savings in the future. The current boxes that we do have still have wooden floors in them, so we would not be able to retrofit with the power load feature. It has to be a steel floor or aluminum floor, either or. And it is just of a general better quality. Wheeled Coach is known to be kind of the Yugo of ambulances, and this one would be kind of, I want to say, middle of the road, a better manufacturer. But as far as that power load, there isn't anything real special or different except for the quality and craftsmanship and the warranty that goes along with it. And that would be to fix the failing boxes that we have.
Today, you've got two failing ambulances, and we're replacing one of them.
That's correct.
What are we doing to keep the fleet that we have? Is one of those ambulances still usable, or is it going to be reserve ambulance again?
So of the two that we have, one of them has been put into reserve status. It is no longer used first out. We are using the older one as the first out ambulance. It is still usable. We're just trying not to use it as much due to the cost of maintenance on it. Some of the maintenance items on the one that is in reserve currently are two new exhaust systems last year. It's gone through three different air conditioning compressors, two different air conditioning retrofits, two sets of tires. Anti-freeze leaks, that was all just last year.
How old is that chassis?
2017. The warranty ran out. It has too many miles on it already. It's got 50,000, almost 60,000 miles on it already.
Okay. And we have a total of three ambulances now, right?
We have a total of three. Two of them are the re-chassis with 2017 chassis on it. The one that is in the worst shape is the one that is in reserve right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustees Abel.
The other question comes out is how do the bid prices compare to other municipalities in the area and the bid prices they have received on ambulances?
So our bid price is actually one of the lower ones. When I've checked with our neighboring departments, we typically don't go with the top of the line ambulances. For example, Sussex is using Peterbilt ambulances, and Cedarburg is using Kenworth ambulances. So with us being with the Chevy, we're kind of sticking to, A, what our mechanics like the best, and it's a better value for the vehicle. The International currently right now, just for the chassis, is running $90,000, and we're at $45,000. And the Kenworths and Internationals are in a neighborhood of $115,000 to $120,000 just for the chassis.
So the other municipalities are getting bids higher than the $283,000, or are they getting bids lower than the $283,000?
They're getting higher. That $283,000, though, is also for purchase of a new multi-band radio that's for this ambulance. The current one is single band radio that we have. Because the county does have the 700 overlay system up and running, which we've been having very, very good luck with, especially on fire scenes, we want to make sure that the new ambulance has the newer radio. The actual cost of the ambulance is $273,000.
So the radio that we have in the car, in the vehicles now, you cannot transfer?
We can transfer. It's an older model. Since we were upgrading the ambulance, we wanted to upgrade the radio so we don't have to rip the interior part again to put the new radio in. It's kind of complicated because they're multi-head radios. There's one head in the front and one head in the back to call the hospital off of, and if you try and retrofit it, you have to re-bring the ceiling down and the walls out to get the cable through.
Okay. The other question I have, I guess to the administrator, because the other question we had is the design of the Public Works campus, the $900,000.
Anything else for John?
No.
In regards to ambulance, anybody else?
I think you answered the question.
Any other questions on ambulances? Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right. Trustees Abel.
Yeah, the other question that ever came up last time was the $900,000 for design. Is that a, a number that we really sure of, or is that a number that can be?
Sure. I can provide some background on what went into that number, as well as kind of an update. You know, that number was, is six months old now, and a lot has changed since then, so I can provide an update on that as well. The $900,000, and the intent was for both design of the Public Works campus, both the architectural services, as well as, you know, detailed site plan development, civil engineering expenses related to, you know, extending sewer and water, other site preparation expenses. And we estimated at that time, and it was an estimate, that that would be approximately 5%. And that, you know, when I say would be approximately, that would be the ceiling, and those expenses would be about 5% of the project costs. And at that point, we were, we were working with a very preliminary estimate of $9 million. So that portion of that $900,000 was $450,000. The other $450,000 was 5%, and we included that in the request for various unanticipated expenses, depending upon what the final site plan looked like. And we had a lot of initial conversations about how we were going to be able to continue operations if we were, for DPW, if we were constructing on the existing footprint, if there were things that we might need to do on a temporary basis before construction could begin to either relocate some of the, some of the services, or create some temporary arrangements for some of the functions that we were doing. So we did include a contingency there to help, so that we had funds available as planning got further down the road, so we would not have to delay the construction if something unanticipated came up later on. At this point, we do have some different information, additional information. As you all know, we've had additional conversations with the Public Works Committee, as well as the village board. It looks like the overall project cost will likely be more than the $9 million, based upon some of the feedback that we received, and making sure that we build a facility that not only meets the needs of the village today, but also is something that, that will, that will be good going forward into the future, since this is, you know, a 50-plus year investment that we'll be making. So we are, we did go back with our, with our preliminary design consultant and asked them for an estimate to go forward with a next phase, looking at some, at a hybrid between the most expensive option that they provided us, as well as the initial $9 million estimate, and we're looking to move forward with that part of the project as soon as possible. Likely, that's going to end up in the, you know, 12, 14, 15 million range. And we'll also include some of the, of the issues that we've been discussing previously. The key question of whether or not the $900,000 is all necessary in the year 2020, in this fiscal year. I would say that the bulk of the money is necessary if we want to keep the project moving forward. We do need to complete the revised conceptual design. We do need to bring a design firm onboard to do the planning for the site and the building. We do need to do the civil engineering work. There may be some additional site improvement and temporary relocation expenses that will happen this year that I, that I can't specifically tell you at this point what they would be, but I think it's important to plan for those upfront. Having said that, I do think it is, it is possible to, you know, reduce this number by $150,000 or so, and with kind of the understanding that if, if we do go beyond that, we can come back to the board and come up with alternative arrangements to finance that. But, but I think that the, it is, you know, it is very critical to the villages', to the villages' public works operations, as well as the issues that we've had in the past with the DNR to, you know, to keep this line in and to move forward with it, with a funding that's adequate to meet all of those activities that we need to complete this year.
Was the Public Works building looking to be built in '21 or '22?
In the five-year plan that we went through, we had construction starting in 2021.
Hearing that, I guess I'd make the motion to reduce that $900,000 down to $750,000.
That is your motion on just the borrowing. Is there any motion against the 2020 capital?
I don't, it was on the table before, and we turned it off, so I would assume that it's back on the table.
So it should be picked up where it is, so you're making a motion to amend?
Correct.
All right. So your motion to amend is to reduce the capital line item project for the engineering on the Public Works building from $900,000 to $750,000?
Correct.
And we have a second discussion on that motion to amend. Trustee Baum.
Minister Krecklo, I thought you said that 450 was needed for the design of the building and the engineering of the site and that part, and you had another 450 in there for additional stuff. Why wouldn't I reduce this down to the 450?
Because I think that there still will be some of those additional expenses, and I, I can't specifically, you know, because at this point, we don't have a plan, and part of the design is not only the design of the building, but an interim operations plan. So, for example, while we're, while we're modifying or constructing a new repair facility for the DPW vehicles, what are we going to do with the, what are we going to do when the vehicles need to be repaired? Are we going to find some other space? Are we going to have to move something around? What about vehicles that are currently being stored in two buildings that'll likely be demolished and probably be at least a portion of the site where the new garage is going to go in? We may, we'll need to work out some temporary arrangements, and there likely will be some costs associated with those. And that's why I'm suggesting that we not take this all the way down to the 450, but leave in some funding for those, those other type of expenses that, while I can't specifically identify, you know, what each line item is and how much it's cost, just based on my experiences with other public works facilities, and especially constructing something on the site of the existing operations, that there will be some of those expenses, and likely we'll need to make those arrangements and have those things set before we're able to fully begin construction.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Unopposed. Back to the motion as amended, further discussion. Trustee Miller.
I have some questions about the asphalt paving. We have 1.5 million in right now, and first I want to preface this by saying I'm not trying to take money. But we've, we have some carryovers that are coming from previous budgets, and I don't want to borrow ahead again if we don't have to. So if we have the projects for this, great, you know, leave the 1.5 million in. But if we can't, if we can't use all this money in this year, then, then let's wait to borrow that much. So I guess I'd like to hear from our Public Works Director and see where we are with, with the budget on, on the roads this year.
Just finished up going over the bid item, bid tab for the 2020 road project, and it looks like we're going to be right around $1.5 million with the inclusion of Holy Hill Road. Holy Hill Road won't be in the initial bid, it'll be in the, you know, maybe a April or May bid letting, due to the fact it's going to be an L-RIP program, and we have to bid it separately and a little bit later. In addition to using up the other funds, that'd be the capital borrow funds, there is, are some funds left in the street program, road, street department, road program budget, excuse me. Talking with the street superintendent, he's given, he has given me a list of a couple, actually five or six roads that we can look at doing that he feels need to be looked at. We have the Paser rating back, I went through that. We have two roads that are rated, or three roads that are rated at 1, and 25 roads that came back rated at 2. And what I'm proposing to do is, in the bid for the 2020 road program, I'm going to include an alternate bid for one of the streets that will include a method of pulverizing and paving that we could use on other streets as we identify. I want to have that as a bid number, so if the bid comes in under the 1.5 million, we have a little bit of that to use, plus it gives me an idea of the cost to use up the leftover money that's rolled over in the highway department budget for streets. And that's what I plan on how to use it up, is to identify the cost. Once we have that, we can identify the streets, we can go in and do more than what we identified in our 10-year program.
Right. Thank you.
What's the total that we have for streets?
1.5. Well, 1.5 in here, but we have about another 500,000.
There's about another 500,000-ish between, and there's some rollover, a little bit of rollover left from the capital budget program, and there's leftover money of about 500,000 runabout numbers in the streets, general levy, street program.
The general government financed tonight, the number was 2.7 million, of which some of that has to go into seal coating and joint sealing and stuff like that, but overall, between repairing streets and doing all the other maintenance on the streets, is 2.7 million that is sitting there with the 1.5 and the rollovers.
The 2.7 includes the 1.5?
Includes the 1.5. It includes the 580, it includes the 400 in the budget this year, and it includes 200,000 in capital.
Director Rath, what?
We need the, we need the right number.
It was 1.5 million of new money, about 200,000 of carryover for capital, and then 588, so it's about 2.3 million.
Right. And another 400 that's in the, in the paving project that is used for seal coating and deal.
No, the 588, yes, if you were talking about, but that could conceivably go carryover because it's a 2020 dollar amount.
Right. This is two years into the 588.
Right. The 588 is clear carryover for capital.
Right.
The 588 is capital, is for carryover in the general fund levy, and there's another 400,000 in 2020's regular budget, but that's for JDU's, and we won't want to use any of that until we know what he's doing.
So the total number is?
2.2. So that's my plan on how to use up the extra funds. There's streets that are identified that always have just slipped through. One of them is Patent Court in Industrial Park 4. It was, it was never, it was never surface coated. It did the straight section, but when it got to the bubble, if you want to call it that, that's in binder. It's just there's streets that we've identified, and just driving around, that have missed being on a street program because it's not a full street. Lover's Lane is another one, Lover's Lane and Sentry. There's other streets that we can identify that we can pick off as long as we have a bid number to do them, and we see what our value is afterwards. And it's easier if I bid out some general line items to do that work. That way, I'm not going back adding, asking for additional number in a change order, where those numbers tend to inflate. So this way, the contractor will be committed to a number to pulverize a street and pave it, and I'll have a quantity for that for a street, which I can apply to a street that we choose to do. I may have one earmarked right away, but it's just a way that I feel we can use up the extra funds in 2020.
But the end result is that the contractors would be able to use, utilize it this year, right?
Yes.
And not have to push it off another year.
No, my intention is to bid it out with the, with the road program and then identify. Once the bids come in, we see where we're at with cost, and then we can, we can place the road in dollar figures to match and get extra, hopefully get extra work done that way.
And the result of the money that's left, is that because of savings that have occurred on road projects that we've done, or because there wasn't time and schedule to allow those monies to be spent within last year's?
Savings. It's really from the last two or three years. We've just kept rolling it over, and, and the bids have come in. Say we bid it out, and the quantities were a little over from what was installed, so we may have saved 50,000 here, 100,000 on another year's projects. The general levy fund money in the street department is, he, we use, we get $500,000 a year in there, and that covers his seal coating and minor repairs. I think typically JLU's about 350, 375,000 of that on average, and we've never identified to try to build it up and put it towards a street. So if you have $100,000, it's really not enough to go and do a street in its entirety. But now that we have an amount in there.
And do you feel that based on what you've got out there, is that pool that that could actually be done within that timeframe? Or are we overreaching where we'll end up with another couple hundred thousand dollars in excess again next year? And the reason for my question is, if we've built up a surplus, that's great, thank you for, you know, for, for finding that and holding on to it. But for me, when I have a surplus, I like to pay down debt. So if we can do that somehow, or not borrow as much because we have a result of what's remaining, I'd like to do that too, because I'm a little uncomfortable with the, with the amount that we're borrowing right now. I think that's high, and if we can drive it down, you know, by 3, 400,000, I'd feel better about it, knowing what it's not going to do to the levy next year. But if you feel, honestly feel we're going to use it up in the roads, and I know we have a lot of road projects, and we all hear from our constituents of roads that are in need, then I'd be more, more willing to do that. But if it comes down to a time versus money, I'd rather pull it back and, and hold it off of the borrowing because of what are the result of the savings we've incurred.
I feel that we're bidding out early enough in late February here that we can utilize the funds that we have. The timeframe for the construction season won't be an issue.
Okay. Trustee Baum.
Just a clarification, the Tiff District for the business park up there, that did not include doing the road after we put the sewer under the road?
Holy Hill Road? If I, if I could, the section?
Oh, no. Holy Hill Road that we're doing is going to be from Highway 45 west to just short of Goldendale Road. It's the next section. Last year, we did, last year, we did east of 145. This year's going to be 145 to the west. And that's rated as a 2.
Yeah, the portion of Holy Hill Road that's being done under the road program was not included in the, in the to-date budget.
Correct.
You, you could argue, as trustee Wing pointed out, you can fund related projects up to, I believe it's two miles outside of the, of the boundaries, but we did not, we did not include that.
We did Wasaki Road on that two years ago, and we, we're, we were up to around the 57 to 59,000 grant that we get through the, through the state, through the funding. And you have to fit certain qualifications, and that section of Holy Hill Road fits the, the criteria that they established to get that funding. So Holy Hill Road will be partially funded through the program. It's about a 350,000 estimated cost, so we will get 58 to 59,000, I believe our money is going to be around this year, it's not set firm yet, back from the state when that is, when that road's done and closed.
Mr. Administrator.
And if I could, I'd just like to add a little bit of explanation about what happens with these surpluses and, you know, that come back and that get carried over. And there, there have been some cases where, you know, for a variety of reasons, you know, projects didn't get bid out, but, but a lot, a lot of this, and, and, and some of the, I believe there will always, or almost always be some carryover going forward, just because as Public Works is doing this, and they look at the amount of money that they have available at the beginning of the year, and the road projects, you know, they, they line up what they expect to, those projects to cost. And, you know, typically, they, they wouldn't go out and, and add additional roads above and beyond what they think they have money for, and, and prepare bid documents. But then as they go through the bid process, you know, they're also working to reduce the actual cost. So they may find, and there have been cases, some of these projects in Germantown where, you know, we found grant money to fill in in some pieces, in, in some ways, sometimes they've changed the design somewhat to reduce the cost, and in other times, the, the bids actually came in lower. So, and I kind of hope that that's the case going forward too, so I, I don't want the, the trustees or the public to think that if, you know, if they come back and, and they're going to, Public Works is going to put together a list of roads to bid out, to use up all the money that's been budgeted and borrowed, but I don't want the, the trustees or the public to think that if they come back next year, and they've got 200,000 they, they didn't spend, it's, it's not because they, they didn't do a good job, it, it could be because they did a really good job, and they, they found savings, and, and then that money is available to carry forward to the next year, which means that we can get more done the, the next year than we anticipated. So, and I also, I completely understand, we don't want to borrow more than we can spend, we don't want to borrow more than we, we need, but, but with, with, with this many projects and, and the, some of the unknowns, you know, they're, they're working to try to keep the costs down and, and, and save the money.
Will the bids be back in time before bonding is released, or will it be after?
Uh, no, because the, the bond sizing, well, I, I believe, the bond issuance, I believe we had this kind of planned for March, so, and we won't have the bids back on the roads, for the roads by that time.
Probably the second week of March, I'm thinking is when we'd have the bids back.
Yeah, and we, and we would.
End of the second week.
The documents for the, the bond issuance need to be prepared before that.
Further discussion, Trustee Hughes.
So, I know a lot of this work has already been done in, in planning for these roads, but how does the lack of, of an engineer affect, you know, the projects moving this summer, since we haven't even hired an engineer yet?
The civil engineer we have on staff will be able to handle these road projects. He handled last year's road projects very well, with very little oversight, and if he runs into some difficult times, we have the oversight to handle it. He did a very fine job last year running the road program, so I have confidence in him being able to do that.
Further discussion, Trustee Zabel.
Did I understand you're going to have the bid documents back by March 7th? Did you say March 7th?
No, I think it's going to be the end of the second week by the time the advertising runs out and we have the bids in.
Okay. I, I always heard it was two months.
I believe it's going in the paper this week to be advertised next week.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Like to switch topics?
Switch topics, we're on a motion.
We have.
Different part of the?
Yeah, different part of the borrowing.
There you go.
Yeah, so switch topics to a different part. Mark, can you bring me up a date on the Fireman's Park? Where, where's the 450 being spent on that?
Good evening. Pretty much the numbers haven't changed from the last couple of conversations, but just to recap, we've been utilizing a two-phase for construction at Fireman's Park. So, the board authorized 750,000 in 19, 150,000 was earmarked for Dinesville, leaving us with 600,000 for Phase 1 at Fireman's. The bid award for, in first phase again was, was site improvements, utilities, so forth. Right now, we are probably at, well, the base bid was 411, we're probably going to be at around 430. So if we're conservative, we're going to have about 150,000 to go towards Phase 2, which is the building itself. At the last board meeting, the board had approved a contract for the design of the building, or Phase 2. The 450,000 combined with the 150 balance is 600,000, and we are planning to transfer 200,000 from impact fees, park impact fees, and 50,000 from another project. So, the number I had shared, and we'll know more once we get a final design, but the number I had shared at a previous meeting was 750 to 850,000 for the building. So, at this point in time, I'm feeling comfortable that the 450 would allow us to build a building that, as you remember, in 2018, we had a conceptual plan, and we went through the public input, and the plan is, is to, to design a multi-use building such as that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion?
As amended. As amended with 150,000 less from the design of the DPW building.
Okay, so that, that leaves us with a total amount of?
3 million, 3,903,311, I just took it off the bottom.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
No.
Trustee Hughes.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye. Five to two. That takes care of all business, so then we'll go on to new business. We start with new business item A, two-lot certified survey map for Edward J. Casper, located at West 217, North 9862 White Horse Drive. To give us some more information and background on our first item for new business, I'll turn the meeting over to our associate planner, Emily Zan.
Can I put a motion on the floor to approve the two-lot subdivision?
You don't want to hear about it?
I know, oh, I know about it, they can introduce, I'm not, so just put it on, on the table.
Okay, you can put a motion out there, absolutely. Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Well, see, Dennis.
Okay, I'll be brief. So this is a, a proposal to divide a 1.24 acre lot into two lots. The lot, proposed lot number one would be buildable for a single-family dwelling, and then proposed lot number two would contain the existing single-family dwelling. The lot size meets the minimum square footage of the RS4 Single Family Residential District. The wetlands and the wetland setback have been delineated on the CSM before you, that we just handed out. There is a navigable stream located within the Indian Parkway right-of-way, which is just north of proposed lot one, that has been delineated along with the 75-foot setback from the stream. Soil evaluations for proposed lot one do show that private onsite wastewater treatment system can be supported. So, with that, the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the two-lot certified survey map CSM of the parcel owned by the Caspers, located on White Horse Drive, with one condition, the CSM that we just handed out to you does address all of the concerns in the memo. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer for you.
You have a motion to approve, any discussion on that motion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming. Next item on our new business is item B, extraterritorial plat two, lot certified survey map, John and Ellen Cooper, located at West 200, North 14144, Rocky Lane in the town of Germantown. To give us some more background information on this item, I'll turn the meeting over to our Community Development Director, Jeff Retzloff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Coopers own a 31.7 acre parcel located in the town of Germantown, within the, the village's extraterritorial plating authority area, and therefore, Village Board approval is required for the proposed two-lot certified survey map to divide the 31 acre parcel into two, two lots, Lot 1 15.6 acres, and Lot 2 16.1 acres. Soil tests show that both can support onsite sanitary systems, and the, the town of Germantown has tentatively reviewed, and I understand approved, the proposed land division subject to Village Board approval, again, under the village's extraterritorial plat authority.
Okay. Board?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Not opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our new business is item C, Resolution 11-2020, Amendment to Renwood Development Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, Trustee Zabel.
This was part of the General Government Finance meeting this morning, or this earlier today, and as part of that, there was an amendment to that agreement, that instead of giving them two single-family lots and one building unit for the condos, the motion was amended to read six single-family, eight single-family individual subdivision lots and eight residential units, or two, either two four families, or two two families and a four family, and the condo units. So, what should be in front of the board tonight, I'm assuming, would be the recommendation from General Government and Finance, I just want to make everybody aware of it. Even though what's on the, what's in our packet is totally different.
And I guess that'd be a question for legal, what, what actually comes to the board is what, what was done by GGF, or what was in the, what's in our packet?
Well, the recommendation comes to the board, but with, unless there is a change of this body, it's what's in the packet. So you would need to make a motion to amend at this point to incorporate that change. Do we have a motion at all?
Yes.
We do?
We do.
Okay.
Trustee Myers, seconded by Trustee Baum.
Okay, so your motion to amend is, is what Art stated?
Right.
And we have a second on that?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion to amend. Explain to me again what changed. The, the change is in the paragraph that allows for the two single-family lots and one condo unit, that was changed to reflect eight single-family homes and eight condominium units. Since these are either two or four-unit buildings, they could either do two four-unit buildings, or a four unit and two, two units. Okay. Okay.
That came out of GGF, there's a two to one vote.
It's a two to one vote out of GGF. The main argument that staff was making in the recommendation that staff had provided is that the intent is that they, once these buildings are up, they cannot be sold or change ownership to anybody until all the final documents are done and, and approved. The only question that always comes up is that sometimes people want to move in and the documents aren't ready, and then all of a sudden, everybody starts pointing fingers at the Village Board, that we allowed something to be built that nobody can live in at this point in time because they haven't finished the development.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Back to the motion as amended, further discussion. No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Want to oppose? New business, item D, final subdivision plat for Phase 1, south 47 lots of the Renwood Residential Subdivision for Newman Development. Agent for Renwood LLC and Freistadt Land Development LLC, property owners, Lot 2 and 3 of CSM 6890, 67 acres located west of Country Airdrive and north of Meckewan Road. For some more information and background on this new business item, again, I'll turn the meeting over to our Community Development Director, Jeff Retzloff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve DeKleen with Newman Developments, Inc., agent for Renwood LLC, is here this evening presenting a, a final plat for a portion of the Renwood subdivision that includes 47 single-family lots. You may recall that back in February of 2018, the village approved a planned development district rezoning the approximately 145 acres, along with a land use plan map amendment, enabling development of approximately 200 total dwelling units, 142 single-family, and up to 60 multifamily condominium dwelling units across the entire property, as highlighted in red on the screen. The single-family areas to the north and on the south are zoned RS5 with the PDD overlay, and the condominium area in the south, the salmon-colored area down the far southerly end, is zoned RM2 multifamily with the PDD overlay. The, while this project was originally approved back in 2007, 2008, it sat dormant until 2018. In July of 2018, the preliminary plat for the entire area was approved with some conditions. In March of 2019, the PDD was amended slightly to accommodate some changes to the condominium development area, and in April of last year, the condominium site plan was approved pursuant to the planned development district resolution and the zoning provisions that apply. At this time, Newman Companies is seeking approval of, again, Phase 1, as, as I term it, of the, of the south, of the south area, 47 single-family lots, as highlighted in red. Here's a copy of the preliminary plat, a copy's in your packet as well. As was touched upon earlier, as part of the Development Agreement Amendment that was approved, the, there, there are certain public improvements that are partially done at this point. Ordinarily, a final plat isn't approved until all the improvements are completed. The sanitary sewer lift station is, is not yet completed, there are certain street and landscaping improvements that remain to be done. The Development Agreement, in effect, allows building of a limited number of dwelling units to occur, occupancy is to be withheld pending completion of all of approved, the, there are certain public improvements that are partially done at this point. Ordinarily, a final plat isn't approved until all the improvements are completed. The sanitary sewer lift station is not yet completed. There are certain street and landscaping improvements that remain to be done. The development agreement, in effect, allows building of a limited number of dwelling units to occur. Occupancy is to be withheld pending completion of all the public improvements, and that was, again, incorporated as part of the development agreement amendment that was just approved. The Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the final plat for the Renwood subdivision Phase One as presented, subject to three conditions, two of which have been satisfied already. We have the letter of no objection from the Department of Administration from their plat review area, and the developer has submitted covenants and restrictions for the development. The third condition is to be enforced by the Public Works Department. They're not to accept all public improvements until certain things are done, including the as-built plans submitted, restoration of all road ditches and drainage, and so on. So with that, the Planning Commission, again, recommendation is to approve the final plat. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Myers.
What you're showing is that all of Phase One?
Yeah.
Yes.
Originally, I thought there was two phases.
Well, this graphic shows the entire development, the north side with all single-family lots, the environmental corridor in the main Central Park area, and then the south development area that includes both single-family and condominium units.
Thank you.
Board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion to approve. Trustee Zabel?
Yeah, the only question I have is the roadway that goes down into the condominiums. This, to my knowledge, is the only time the board has ever approved a public road that goes into a condominium area. My understanding that it was all in the site plans, I just, I never, never made the presumption that that meant that that was going to be a public road. And I just have a problem having one condominium association within the village of Germantown that has a public road.
That's connected?
It's not, it's just, it's a bubble that comes off. It's just a cul-de-sac.
Just one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's a cul-de-sac. It was presented in the preliminary plat in the same manner as a, as a proposed dedicated street, and was approved as such.
I've seen the circles, I just never assumed that they would be dedicated, is why I say we usually don't have public roadways within condominiums.
Trustee Baum?
Is there a problem with doing that?
No.
It's just setting precedents for anything else that comes forward.
But there's no problem with doing it this way?
Well, I don't know.
Well, it's a cul-de-sac, so it's last.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, that's it basically, yeah, there's maintenance. If they, if they choose to park on it, or do things on it that are not, you know, once it becomes a public road, then...
It would fall near the guidelines of any other public road in regards to what you can or can't do on it.
Right, I mean, that means verticating and everything else, and parking overnight and the whole bit. It also means, well, the other thing I brought out is that every time you have a public road, you're supposed to have setbacks, and setback lines. There's no, nothing delineated here, but I was told at General Government, because Planning Commission approved a site plan that sold those things, they don't need to sell the setback limits off of a public road. And I'm, I just never realized that occurred, for the simple reason that under, underlying zoning dis, it says it's supposed to be so many feet off of a right-of-way. I don't know if that's occurred or didn't occur, and I don't think we modified that.
The, the Plan Development District Resolution included language that requires compliance with all of the other applicable codes, including general zoning, and the underlying RM5 and RM2, RS5 and RM2 zoning districts that apply. The Plan Development District regulations themselves specifically provide for, after a PDD has been adopted and a general development plan adopted, detailed plans are to be submitted to the Plan Commission for review and approval. In this case, the condominium area is treated as a site plan, and the site plan was approved, presented and approved, consistent with the underlying RM2 and modified PDD requirements that include the setbacks. The 20, 25-foot setback was adopted in the PDD for the condominium area in the front yard. A 35-foot setback applies as a standard requirement in the RM2 zoning district, and that is reflected on the site plan as well. So all of the requirements for zoning that are contained in the underlying RM2 and the specific ones in the PDD regulations have been complied with as part of the site plan approval. So you can rest assured that what is supposed to be enforced and administered has been through the correct process, which is, in this case, a Plan Commission review and approval of the site plan for the condominium area. The other requirement that, that all of the other applicable codes apply include the subdivision code, which specifically says that PDDs are to be handled as a site plan approval unless it's a plat, and then you go through the standard plat review approval, which is what we're going through this evening with regard to the final plat. So I, I understand your concerns, but again, you can, you can rest assured, and if need be, we can go over the approved plans that clearly show that those things have been complied with as part of the approval process.
No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Next item under new business is item E, Resolution 122020, Establishing 2020 Waits and Measure Device Fee Schedule.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. This also came through GGF tonight? Trustee Zabel?
That came through with unanimous approval.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
None opposed.
Motion carries. Next item under new business, item F, Replacement and Purchase of Ambulance from Lifeline Ambulance in Amount Not to Exceed $273,881.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Zabel?
Do we have to add the S to 10,000 to get to the 283 for the radio?
I was going to do that on a separate, for disorder.
Okay.
Further discussion? Somebody else have their hand up? No further discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Hughes?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item under new business is item G, Jurisdictional Transfer of County Y from Washington County to the village of Germantown. Oh, village administrator?
This is a...
Looking for some information.
No, well, this was an item, it did go before the Public Works Committee. The Public Works Chair isn't here, but I'd be happy to cover this. This is a, the result of a series of discussions that the Public Works Director and I have been having with the county related to the future of Goldendale Road, or County Highway Y. And the County Highway Commissioner, Scott Schmidt, is here to answer questions as well. As development occurs out in the Holy Hill area, and, you know, extending north from Freistadt towards Holy Hill, there's some rationale for the village, I think, taking over management and administration of Goldendale Road, and having control over things like, like speed limits and intersection design at Holy Hill and Goldendale Road, location of driveways, acceleration, deceleration lanes, those, those types of things. In addition, it's, it's likely that there could be some efficiencies that as we're having to do more work, plowing, et cetera, out in the development around Goldendale Road, that there, it may be more efficient for us in the, in the future to, to also, you know, plow and maintain Goldendale Road as well. So those discussions led, those thoughts led us into negotiations with the county to transfer jurisdiction for County Y, Goldendale, from the county to the village. And the, the transfer agreement that we're recommending tonight would include a cash payment to the village that is equivalent of two, $225,000 per mile for the 3.1 miles of Goldendale Road that, that have been, that have not been recently repaved, as well as a payment of $125,000 per mile for the three-quarters of a mile that, that was repaved in, in 2019. That amount would be adjusted downward by $100,000, as, as the agreement would also, the county would be, within the near future here, redoing the Goldendale-Freistadt intersection, which is an area that needs to be updated and addressed. They would take the, the lead on doing that and, and pay for the, the expense of those, of those upgrades that were done. So that would result in a, in a net cash payment to the village of about $692,000, which we would then set aside for, for paving work as it, as it needs to get done. In addition to that, one of the provisions that the state levy limit law includes is that the State Department of Revenue would, when these types of jurisdictional transfers take place, they, they assess the levy impact of those transfers, and, and in essence, transfer that levy from the, the, you know, for lack of a better word, the donating entity to the receiving entity. And as receiving entity, we would, we would see an increase in the, in our levy limit to allow for the ongoing maintenance and operation of that road. Best estimate that I have that amount is set by DOR, best estimate that I have of that at this point is about $42,000 per year that, that we would be able to utilize for the, the, the maintenance of the road. I think that's a pretty good overall summary of the finances, as well as the operations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that trustees might have.
Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, trustee Wing.
Just not convinced that this is a good deal for us. It might be in the first year, but long-term, we're already behind on roads. We're adding a road. The fact that we can increase the levy limit is only telling the taxpayer that not only do we have another road, but now we can raise your taxes more than we could have before. I don't see any upside to this, aside from maybe what we get to put political signs in the right-of-way now, on Goldendale Road, which you can't on a county...
In the right-of-way? You're not supposed to.
In, in Germantown, yeah.
It's not, well...
In, in the...
Within the setback.
Yeah, within the setback.
Right.
Excuse me, right-of-way wasn't the right terminology. But I don't see any upside, I don't see any upside financially in this.
Well, and I guess, you know, the intent is, as we've gone through these negotiations, that there's, it remains neutral, that the, that, that this is a financially neutral transaction where we do take on the road, we do take on the, the long-term costs of the road, and the county does pay for that. So if you, if you, if you think about it, in essence, this would pay, the amount that, that we're being provided would account for repaving of the road through about the year 2050. And, and at that point, you know, assuming we're all, we're not driving George Jetson flying vehicles...
Or are alive.
That, that the village would be, you know, would be responsible for any paving expenses at that point. Regarding the tax levy, and, and although it doesn't work out exactly this way because the, the cost, that $42,000, and, and that's the decision, that's the maximum that we could go up, the board isn't required to do that, it would, it would be adjusted in, into the cap. It doesn't work out exactly evenly because that $42,000 is attributed over the county now, and, and this would only be on the, the village of Germantown residents, but in, theoretically, and as the county is doing this with other communities, it, it should balance out, where people should not be being taxed more for, for the road maintenance that, that, in, in the long run, as the county does this with, with Slinger, or Hartford, or other communities, and then Germantown residents are taxed less for those, Slinger and Hartford residents are going to be taxed less for this road, it, it should balance out. But I think the real rationale for doing it is the fact that the area around this road is changing, and, and that then, it changing from a rural road leading from one community to another to, and if you think about in 2050 what this area is going to look like, to more of a, of a, of a road that's part of a community. And I'm not sure if I'm doing this justice in explaining, you know, why, why I think this jurisdictional transfer is, is something that, that we're looking at and talking about on why this particular road, but if you think about in 2050, when those expenses really would hit the village, this is likely to look a lot different, and it may not make sense for it to be a county highway. So I, I completely understand the question and the concern, and, and there are multiple ways to look at that, but that's, that's the argument that's behind the, the recommendation that we're making.
Trustee Zabel?
One of the things that state legislators looking at is, is removing that transfer of funds. It's one of the things in front of the state legislative board and senate, because it's out of the Tonys and stuff, because they have to reduce the levy, or the other one's an increase of levy. There have been enough arguments that it sounds like there's going to get rid of it totally. So to assume that it's going to be there, I don't know if I would. But back to the issue is that you always try to keep your, your heavy vehicles on county roads, so they don't do the damage and stuff on your industrial roads. So by, by switching the jurisdiction off of, off of Goldendale to a municipal road, chances are, if we decide to do trucking, we, we could basically say no trucking on Goldendale. Basically, everybody who come out of that industrial park would have to use the expressway to go back down and around. As long as the county roads are there, they could still use the county roads to do that. The other thing is that I'm hearing from people out there that the trucks are starting to go all the way down and use Maple Road, because it's more of a convenient road to them to use to come down and get into the industrial park. Now, that means it puts heavier traffic on our roads, on Holy Hill, Maple, which we haven't, when we redid Maple, we didn't design it for heavy trucks. The upgrades and stuff that were done, done to it were, under the assumption that there wouldn't be that type of trucking because you had Goldendale, and that's where the truck traffic was for it to be. So I say, I don't know if it's a benefit or not. I know many years ago, they, they put it, tried to put it in the jurisdictional maps that was done by Southeast Regional, that at one time, the jurisdiction would switch from Goldendale, and that the county would take Maple Road from 145 all the way down to 175, which would run that whole stretch, and, and that was the swap that was talked about, my, I said, on one of the jurisdictional map things. What I didn't, and I forgot to ask the county guy at Public Works, when is the county going to be taking over Fond du Lac Avenue and Appleton Avenue from the state? Because that's why they repaved it, and part of that jurisdictional mapping that was done is that they would become county roads. And I'm not sure when that's occurring. I, I say, I really have a toss-up on this, because I, I don't know, like, the answer is if it's really a benefit for the village at this time. answer is if it's really a benefit for the village at this time. I just don't, other than the fact that we get to say whether, that you can have a driveway onto it, off of it, that's about it.
Trustee's, trustee Wing?
Well, you had mentioned neighbors and trucks on Maple Road. The neighbors on Maple Road complain about the truck traffic, and the neighbors on Goldendale Road complain, complain about the truck traffic, which always led to my argument, is why we should be looking at on-off ramps on Freistadt Road. Take the traffic, truck traffic clear out of town, get it off our roads, get it off Maple, and get it off Goldendale. I don't know why we're not focused more on that, I know there's cost issues there.
That's been approached in regards to other discussions we've had with Department of Transportation that, of that possibility, but I don't think it's an immediate fix that helps remedy this. I think that that would take longer years to come about and around than, than what's occurring here. But I don't think it's, it's out of the realm of possibility, but not short-term.
Yeah, I think it should be looked at more in short-term than long-term. But regardless, the intersection of Goldendale and Freistadt is terrible. There's constantly signs being hit, trucks that are, are stuck there, where neighbors are getting out and helping them back out. You got a school on the corner where kids are walking to school. It's a terrible intersection, and the fact that they're making this part of the deal, that they're going to help out in that intersection is great, but it should have been repaired long ago, it shouldn't be part of a negotiation. That's a troubled intersection that should, should have been focused on way before some negotiation. I like the idea of a swap better than I do a cash payment, and, you know, I'd rather look at that. Maybe we do go back to that original idea that Art had said occurred. When did this occur?
My memory, every, I don't know if it's every 10 years, every 15 years, Southeast Regional does a jurisdictional map of the counties, and they sit down with all the members within the counties and say, this is how the roads, this is your traffic flow, this is what we think should occur. As part of that, there was a talk about transferring Goldendale to Maple. Maple made a nice, nice good run, that they could run from 145 down to 175. A nice, nice straight road, covered from one highway to the Nets Highway, which is what to do with county roads, and that, the fact that Goldendale then would be eliminated, because we took what used to be, Holy Hill Road used to be Highway 1, I can't remember, which, which is on Metro Road now, but it used to have, it used to be a state highway up there, and it's not anymore. But as part of those transfers, that, what they had talked about, that at that time, they had an on-off ramp at Freistadt, that we thought we had the state approved, but I guess the last one that went through in 2006 that was, that was taken off, so...
I can just add that, as, as we've been having these conversations with, with the county, there are some roads, and, and Maple is not one that's, that's been a part of the conversations at, at this point, but I, I think, and, and I, I do think that, that in concept, and whether this specific one is something the village board finds acceptable or not, you know, I'll, I'll find out soon, but, but I think in concept, the idea of, of kind of evaluating these roads and assigning them to the jurisdiction that makes the most sense today is, is a good process to go through. Goldendale was, was the first one that, that we focused on, there are some others that, that we have talked about, going both ways. We didn't, and for, in, in part because of where they fall in paving schedules, and, you know, and the other issues like these, like these intersections that, that need work, both the, the Goldendale and Freistadt, as well as the Goldendale and Holy Hill, that, that we felt this one was, it made sense to move this forward with this one first, but I think that there will be others that, that we'll be talking about and bringing forward in the future, and, and there will, that will include some, some swaps going forward. Whether it'll be mile for mile, that, that I don't, I don't know at this point, but, but I think there will be some, some swaps that we'll be bringing forward to the village board in the future.
It's up, it's up to the board if you have specific questions, otherwise, what would you ask him to speak on? You're welcome to come to the podium.
Scott Schmidt, Washington County Highway Commissioner, actually Germantown resident as well. We did look at those 2050, 2035 maps, and that's kind of what brought this around, is if you've ever read the paper, we've been doing a lot of jurisdictional transfers throughout the last several years, to look at those maps, because just one thing to have in the drawer, kind of thing to actually act on those. To get to your point of like 145, yeah, that was, it's one of those that's on there. If you look at the, the map, there's a lot of different kinds that are on that map, as, as Administrator Kirk told us, that there's a lot of different ones that are out there and available. 145 was not repaved because of one of you plus Washington County, it was in such bad shape, they wanted to repay it, they did approach us, but since they just did a little milling and overlay on it, we didn't feel as appropriate then to take it over, because we knew, if you driven it recently, you see all the cracks or overlay reflecting through. One thing to mention too, is the general transportation aid as well would go up for the Village of Germantown as well, because your transportation aid is based on the mileage, the transportation aid is different from state of Wisconsin. The county transportation aid is not based on mileage, it's based on how much you've spent over the last six years on roadways, 911 service, and stuff like that, just kind of...
Like I said, the, the only other thing would be the transfer of, from Maple and Goldendale, do a swap on them, but that's, I don't know where that is, or even if it would be considered.
I think, I think Mr. Kirk will put that very well, that we discuss all roadways as well, with potential... Something rather quickly and vastly out there, just for instance, you have Delvin, just off of Rockford Road, those plans and those access points go to the county, they got to go to us, they get an appeal, so that it makes it a lot easier for the developer to come in, know everything with one entity versus come to the county. Those... ...versus... ...traffic on Goldendale Road going north and south, because that's by county highway, it's only when they turn onto Freistadt Road that there's a problem, that's why we're not looking at... ...intersection despite, we have done any improvements to that intersection.
Any further discussion? No further discussion? Thank you for coming forward. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hughes?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Nay.
Trustee Zabel?
Nay.
President Walter?
Nay. Motion passes 4-3. That then takes us to our last item under new business, Item H, Administrator 2020 Performance Standards. The village board may convene in the closed session, per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, subsection 1, sub-paragraph C, for considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and may convene into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss Item H, and...
Going to the administrator.
Right. Village clerk and the village attorney do not need to attend.
All right. Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to approve going into closed session? No discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Hughes?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye. Before we go into closed session, the next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, March 2nd, at 7:00 PM here at the Village Hall Boardroom. Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you all for watching, and have a good night. Couple minutes before we go into closed session, please turn off your microphones.